To reply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Pushed by Mr. Monica, second by Mr. Mutter. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Vote. That motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the student government report. Does anyone hear from student government? One more day. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, five twenty-two two thousand fourteen. The enrollment report from June first, the school police report from May first, and the residency truancy report from six one. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Fiorello to accept the consent agenda, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? Mr. De Monica.
Dr. Thornton, on the truancy report, does it like end when school ends and then we start all over again in September, or do we continue to research those students that were out of the district?
These research bills don't actually have two active cases right now.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed. That motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is a report out of executive session meeting from six twelve two thousand fourteen. There were no votes taken at that meeting. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mr. Duffy and Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Both oppose, and that motion passes seven zero. The chair voting yes. And Dr. Thornton, next item is the superintendent's report, recognition of achievements.
Good evening, everyone. We have a few individuals here this evening that we would love to recognize. And first up is Dr. Thornton with a special recognition.
Good evening. First, I'd like to recognize two retirees this evening in the district. First, let's call up Ms. Joanne Arthur. She's been with us for twenty years since nineteen ninety-four, starting out in the high school student management, then over in guidance in the high school, and finally at Garland School. Twenty years of service to Cumberland, so thank you very much. This is your incumbent for retiring, a little kind of a tote bag. And our last retiree, principal. One of our principal leaders, principal experts, here for nine years, formerly a salt fellow, just an expert in teaching and learning, will be sorely missed, but I know she'll have fun with her grandkids out in Seattle. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Nidia Carbonic, the principal of Ashton School, to offer some recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting us once again here to recognize volunteers. On behalf of everyone at Ashton School, I would like to recognize tonight two parents that have gone above and beyond their call of duty as volunteers who are at school. These two ladies have been at the tour school and our parent teacher organization for a number of years. Mrs. Karen Longest has been volunteering at Ashton School for the past eight years. She has been the chair of the cultural events committee for the past five years, and has been our PTO vice president for the last four years. Usually, the president and the vice presidents get elected every year, and these ladies just keep coming back, which is wonderful. You can usually find Mrs. Longest volunteering at almost every PTO event. However, she is well-known for her donations with her talents doing face painting at the duck race to raise funds for the school, and doing free painting, face painting for students during field day. And she coordinates all of our cultural event programs that we have during the school day throughout the year for our students. Mrs. Longest, would you please come up to be recognized?
Ms. Jody Lamagna has been our PTO president for the past four years. Jody has been instrumental in recruiting teachers to be active members of our PTO. She is a strong advocate for our students and has done a great job building a positive relationship between the parents and the teachers and among the other PTO members throughout the town. Jody is fully committed to her job and usually volunteers to help out at almost every PTO event. Again, if there is a need anywhere, Jody will pick up the pieces. She's usually stepping up to the plate and cheering any committee that needs to be cheered in order to make sure that students do not miss out on anything. She has also been instrumental in planning, and most of you have, I believe, attended the events. They're held on wizard's events that we've had between the elementary schools. She has also spearheaded a couple of very successful salad notions at the school. She has secured grants for our school to improve our playground, and we're very fortunate to have Jody continue to be the PTO president at Ashton School for the upcoming year. Jody, would you please come up and be recognized? Again, on behalf of everyone at Ashton School, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize these two ladies for their wonderful commitment and contributions to our school. Thank you so much.
And last but not least, we have the retiring Donna Carrera, the principal of Cumberland Hill, and one of her teachers, Rose Voucher, would like to share a recognition with us this evening.
I'm going to turn this over to Rose, who has worked with our student council for the past year along the super lanes. So I'm going to turn this over to them because it is their work.
Thank you for letting us come this evening. I would like to introduce four of our student council members. It's Hallie Jacobiak, if you could come on up, Alexis Heinrich, Ryan Naylor, and Michael Gallagher. Over the course of the year, these students have met bi-weekly, and they plan, and they've done a lot of good things for the school. They've promoted food drives, they've raised money to earn money for the school to... I'm very nervous up here, Michael. Come on up here. I'm going to try to open up Michael. He's one of our fifth graders. And Michael and one of the other students, they prepared a PowerPoint presentation they would like to share with you, which explains much better than I'm doing right now with the work that they've done this year.
Thank you, Cumberland School Committee, for letting us present what student council did this year. Our student council is made of two representatives elected by their classmates. Lucas Mattos was our treasurer. Alec Lavalley was our president, Derek Berry secretary, and Jack Doherty, the vice president. During the food drive, we've collected over fifteen hundred cans. The holiday food drive, we also collected over fifteen hundred items donated. The toy drive benefited many families. During the breakfast food drive, we've collected Spam, Cheerios pancake mix, syrup, jelly, and corned beef hash. The summer lunch food drive, many people brought in summer food items. One hundred sixty-three pounds was donated today. Student council had fundraisers this year. We raised two hundred and eighty-four dollars between a used book sale and a holiday food in a jar sale. The money we raised will go to a new bike act for Cumberland Hill. Thank you, Cumberland School Committee, for supporting us and letting us present this PowerPoint presentation.
Great job. Thank you. Next item is the chairperson's report, funding formula and the BEP. I've had a few committee people ask some clarifying questions about the accuracy of the formula calculations that were presented during the budget meeting related to charter school tuitions. And so I asked Dr. Thornton just to check the math. And then, secondly, as was raised, a question about the revenue that would be lost too. So I think you have a handout. Is that correct?
Yes. First, in terms of checking the math, it's really quickly. We did a double, triple check. That math is correct. In terms of one slide, I remarked, I believe, the council talking about taking back the students just off the committee's edification. We did take the students with their physical address, place them back in the exact location they go. It wasn't just placing them back generally, it was exact locations. Those are our tight numbers. In terms of the revenue conversation, pass that down. So far, our conversations have been around charters in general and expenditures, the expense end of the budget. We've talked about it going to two point nine million this next year, but we haven't really talked about the revenue side of it. So in your hand now, you have a schedule that was prepared, and this is now the revenue side. Currently, with the charters going out, the various green beacon, international, Remont Village Green, in the end of the day, after you take out the formula, the different machinations they do, it's a one point six six million dollar loss. So in terms of the charter conversation, it's a revenue and expense conversation. Putting them both together, it's two point nine plus the one point six, like a four and a half million dollar conversation. So if you have questions on the sheet, we can throw it out. Alex, take you through the sheet. But essentially, you see a base funding formula with the students' tax factor multiplied in there. Then we get a point four two percent ratio. It's a lot of just math machinations. The bottom line is, it's a one point six six reduction in revenue to the Commonwealth to the various charters in the state.
Any other questions, Mr. Duffy?
You might apologize. I know I miss him leaving me late tonight. I guess I fully understood where we were before with the money that comes in through us and back up to the charter. So maybe you could take it back a step and explain to me exactly what I'm looking at as far as you're talking about revenues. So that's exactly what you're talking about when you say revenues, maybe, or somebody. Because I'm just looking at numbers. And to this point, we've always talked about the money that we're sending with the students who are BVP. But what does this actually mean, I guess, in layman's terms?
Can you come to the microphone?
Yeah, the amount we talk about on the expenditure side is that dollar amount that we pay per student for children that would be in Cumberland schools that attend the various child schools they go to. And that's that two point eight nine million dollar number that's in the budget they've seen. This is the state aid that, you know, the state funding formula, the state aid follows the child. So those children being in those schools, the state aid to education goes to those schools. So you see the sheet in front. I don't have it because I gave it to Phil to pass out, but I kind of remember what it looks like. There's that first piece of the core ratio amount, about eighty-nine hundred dollars, times the students of each school to come up with a dollar amount. And then Ride was able to tell us exactly which one of those students were free or reduced. So that bonus piece, they get an extra forty percent of state aid if a child is free or reduced. You see that calculation on there. It comes up to somewhere three point six seventy-eight million dollars, I think the number for the two pieces put together. And then you take that third piece of the formula, the state share ratio, which is based on the assessed valuations and the ability to, you know, the wealth of the community and property values and stuff for Cumberland. That's a forty-two point two percent number next year. So you multiply that number times the three billion change in state aid, you get the million six sixty-six. That's the lost state aid by having those children not in our district and going someplace else.
Thank you, Clark. So just so I can now put the pieces together, thank you. That actually, now I understand it. So up to this point, we've been talking about the money that we get directly from the town that we send over to charter schools. Now, we're also taking in the piece, if we have those students here, we'd be getting directly from the state that matches the local funding with each of the children, correct? So do we have something that is the total figure? I mean, if you did the math for what we're sending out plus this, have you done that?
Well, if you just add them both together, in my mind, the expense side and the revenue side, you just put them together, you get the four and a half.
Four point five nine. And you said at the council meeting, it would cost how much if we were to bring those back by their addresses and stuff?
Make sure I model by their addresses, four hundred thousand K eight, not the high school, it's K eight.
And just to clarify, that was, those were the students who left the district. That wasn't the totality of students. So is that correct? That's my understanding. Any further questions? Thank you for this. We'll take a, like a two-minute recess in case the folks who are in the audience didn't get their little kids home. We're just going to take a two-minute break. Trying to stay on the funding formula and the BEP. Mr. Mutter has a question for Mr. Prennado or Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Prennado, so I'm trying to make sense of this sheet. So, and I think what was in front of the council was just the, it was just one charter school rate that if they all came back, not the total amount.
Okay, council, we model, I believe, it's two hundred eighty-six, it was all the K eights, so it was meeting to with three schools or what? Oh, okay. All right. So if I took the sheet, and I know you don't have it, but the total was one million six hundred and sixty thousand six thirty-one. So if there weren't any charter schools, if there weren't any students in Cumberland attending charter schools, the state aid number that's currently in the budget would go up one million six hundred and sixty thousand, sixty thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars? Okay. And on the expense side, what you're saying on the expense side, would there's, what's the, the total number appears to be about three point four million dollars on the sheet? Or what's the expense side for charter, what's the, what's leaving the budget for charter schools on the expense side?
The three point four million dollars, the sheet now includes a couple of the state schools and our charter schools, the Madden babies, those eighteen students. So eighteen students out of three eighty-five would be state schools. So that would affect that. There are about two point nine million in the budget actually for charter schools.
Okay, so if there were, if none of the students were attending charter schools, it would be a bump on the budget revenue side of one point six six zero. And on the expense side, there'd be a reduction of the two point nine minus whatever it would cost to bring them back into the district. Is that correct?
And reduce, you said charter schools, charter and state schools.
Correct.
Should include that babies and math at the bottom. Since they're on the schedule, you have to include that too.
So that's the understanding. So that, so I just want to make sure. Okay, so that's good. Whatever the cost, we just don't know what the cost would be to bring them all back into the district that's currently in the budget, but we know that it's not anywhere near the two point nine. In terms of elementary street, street forward, high schools depend on what course they take. I couldn't really model a section of, you know, Western Civ or, you know, English twelve. I know who they are. I could do a ballpark for high school, a little different animal for the high school.
The four hundred thousand, I think, represented two hundred eighty-six of three hundred eighty five kids. My number's actually a little better because we had our original ride estimate for four oh one, for four oh one. And this was latest numbers, I just, you know, back eight months ago, and the game was, these numbers are now three eighty-five. So it's a little bit better than we had, it's just a bit sixteen six.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of standing committee's payment of bills. Mr. Mutter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fiscal management did not take action on our payment of bills this evening. Right in the Google Drive link, and we took the luxury of scheduling for next Thursday prior to a scheduled school committee executive session for fiscal management. And though we didn't discuss it, we would be petitioning you to have a full school committee meeting after, because even though we passed it, that's not good enough, I would presume. You'd need a full school committee, which had gotten past me and fiscal management. So you'll need to schedule something after our six o'clock, our six o'clock special finance fiscal management meeting next Thursday, in which we have only payment of bills on the agenda and work with you tomorrow to make sure that happens. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next item is fiscal management subcommittee update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fiscal management met a little past seven this evening. We will be offering a recommendation on SCR six two thousand fourteen zero eight, which is the electronic messaging sign. And we will be offering a recommendation on the employment contract for business manager, manager further on down the docket. On the item of the energy savings contract, and I noticed that council member Lauren, also a member of the finance committee, that there was some discussion of a joint meeting between the two bodies. I presume that at some point in time during the docket, they will explain that that won't be necessary at this juncture.
All right, thank you. It's on the finance agenda for next week, the self-finance committee. Well, we just put it on there to be able to hear if there's anything. Did you say this?
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Teal, policy and procedures?
Thank you.
Policy and procedures met nately seven.
We went over iterations and searches, proficiency-based grading, which I'll be discussing in a few minutes, policy for students who have reached the age of majority. They have some confidentiality and notification issues that we addressed, flag displays and flag salute and treatments, and student substance abuse policy, which also be being created forward, sorry. And our next meeting is going to be June twenty-fourth, and it'll be at five thirty PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, achievement and communication subcommittee update. Dr. Caldwell, just a quick question. Our meeting is scheduled for the seventeenth, or is it the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay, as well. So we will be meeting with high school guidance to discuss a few items, particularly what their standards of practice are around students at the varying levels. So as a freshman, what does guidance do to support students? And then, as they move through the years, how do we best support students as they're planning their career paths? So that will be the twenty-fourth on the same night as policy. Next item is public hearing, reading of policies. Mrs. Teal, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. And I would just as soon take them individually because they're all unique policies. I-12, formerly known as IK-A, this is the proficiency-based or standards-based grading. It's been now split into two policies, K to eight and then nine through twelve. I'd like to take K to eight proficiency-based reporting policy, or actually, it's proficiency-based grading policy is the correct name. Dr. Masterson is here to answer any questions, but really, this section of the policy did not change significantly from what has already been passed. It's just been called out so that, because the high school policy is different from the K through eight. So I would ask, on a three to zero vote, this policy was approved as amended, and I would ask that it would be read into the record, please, and make a motion that it be read into the record.
So just for clarification, this would be the second reading of votes of these policies?
It would really be the first reading, but K through eight proficiency-based grading is, has not significantly changed. So it's an amended policy. So it could be the first reading and a vote because there's not a significant change to the policy.
Understood. So we have, you mentioned two policies so far. At this point, because it's a public hearing, we'll open the hearing up. Does anyone have anything that they would wish to make a statement about with regard to those policies? Hearing them. Okay, let's continue on.
So I have a motion on the table to, oh, I'm sorry, it was just to read the policies into the record. I'm sorry. So K-I thirteen, formerly known IKFC, this is the high school proficiency grading policy, or proficiency-based grading policy. This policy did change, and Mr. Temaro is here to answer any questions. One thing that it did is it clearly stated how the numerical grades would be calculated, and that is now contained in the policy. And that was the major change that was made to the policy. If anybody has any questions, I would request that you direct them to Mr. Temaro. And this would be a first reading policy, please.
Does anyone in the public have any questions for Mr. Temaro on I-13, which is the high school?
Proficiency-based grading policy for the high school.
So, hearing that, and the committee, does the committee have a question? All right, moving on.
The third policy is now going to be numbered C dash one. That is flag display, flag salute and treatment. It's a combination of two policies that were somewhat out of date that we've now combined. And it just puts in policy that flags will be treated with respect. That this would be a first reading, but it's a revised combination of the two policies that only would require a reading. And it was also approved on a three to zero vote.
Does anyone wish to speak on the flag policy? Mr. Mutter?
Madam Chair, I feel comfortable. Mr. Fiorello, who usually used to track me, that was not present at those policy meetings, so we did not pass that. That's only for Mr. Fiorello's. Yes, thank you. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So there's, does anyone wish to speak on that policy? All right, Mrs. Teal?
Thank you. And the fourth policy will now be G dash ten, FERBA policy for students who have reached the age of maturity. Dr. Caldwell is here to answer any questions. But when a student turns eighteen, they have different rights because they are not considered adults. But we wanted to make sure that if a student turned eighteen, that their parents would be notified. There was a way for parents to be notified if there was a disciplinary issue or an academic issue, that parents still had the ability to know about it. They don't have an ability to take an action because the student is now eighteen and an adult. But we wanted to make sure that they were notified so there were no unpleasant surprises at the end of the year when the student was to graduate. And this policy is in compliance with all applicable laws. And this would be a first reading. It's a brand-new policy, so it would require two readings.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on G-10, the FERBA policy for students who have reached the age of maturity?
Majority.
Majority. They aren't guaranteed to mature. I can second that. All right, hearing them. We will call the hearing closed unless there's any other public comment. And then we'll move on to the open public comment section. Thank you, Mrs. Teal. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Anyone in the public wish to speak? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm returning here tonight to reiterate my request that the school committee requests that the Human Resources Office get enrolled in the federal E-Verify system. However, prior to this meeting, I received confirmation from someone in Resources that an individual will be appointed during the summer time to take the necessary training and to enroll into that program. If that is the understanding of this committee, I would like to say thank you for your cooperation in making this happen. Is that your understanding?
We're gonna have Mrs. Open Comment, just provides some remarks.
Thank you, I'm sorry. We discussed this in policy, and we had determined that because we didn't have any other policies governing how, you know, we didn't have an I-nine policy and some of the other things that we do in Human Resource, that this was going to be more of a procedure. So both Marion Verone, my confidential assistant, and Audrey, the H R clerk, are undergoing the necessary training, and then they have to take a test in order to be able to enter people into the E-Verify system. So as soon as that is done and they are, I think the word is certified in E-Verify, the Human Resources Office will start to do that as part of our hiring along with our I-nine section. We anticipate that that will all be done prior to August. And so when we have our new wave of hiring, if we do have any new hires for August, that they'll all be able to go to the E-Verify system.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Does anyone in the public wish to speak? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Scott Boragad, resident here in Cumberland. I'm sure you've all received emails from me and from many parents from the community school. So I'd like to just discuss the whole situation. It was quite interesting to note before I get going, this whole talk about charter schools and some of our students in Cumberland going to these charter schools, something maybe because of the things that are happening in the district, like what's happening with our beloved teacher, Mrs. Salon. And I'd like to think that the public school district was an amazing district in which everyone didn't want to make those choices to go elsewhere. So first, I applaud that, all the teachers, I applaud all of the teachers at community school, and I'm a strong advocate for the principal there, Mrs. Giroux. Teachers have all exceeded our expectations, and we are truly thankful to have them. As parents, I couldn't think of a better place for my children to attend elementary school. But this is about the students. It's not about trying to reinstate a wonderful teacher. The administration has already made that decision. They've let Mrs. Salon know that she's not wanted. So quite frankly, no matter how the decision is voted on, we've already lost her. What kind of a teacher would want to come back to this type of administration? One that casts aside teachers based on undisclosed matters? They've told us all, the parents and Mrs. Salon, that she's a great teacher in the classroom. I've been a schoolteacher for almost twenty years, and I can tell you, the first five minutes I walked into her room, she was an incredible kindergarten teacher. One of the best I've ever seen. So remember, this is about the students. Clearly, the administration is not putting students first. So what have they done? What have they put first before the students? By doing this, they're telling us that the students are not the priority. They don't need excellent teachers. So what comes first? The curriculum? Raising test scores? I don't think these things come first. What matters is the day-to-day education that's put forth by these excellent teachers. Teachers like Mrs. Salon that are creative, intelligent, organized, and most of all, are truly concerned for the child, the education of our children. Curriculums come and go, and as a matter of fact, in a teacher's lifetime, you probably go through half a dozen curriculum. But the really great teachers will teach the concepts based on the student's learning ability. Every student has an individual learning plan, and it doesn't fit exactly with any curriculum. An outstanding teacher creates lessons and activities and modifies materials based on the needs of the student in his or her classroom. That's the kind of teacher Cumberland is casting aside. Again, this is not a fight to keep the teacher, the mistakes already been made cannot be undone. I certainly wouldn't want to work in that district after what she's been through. But keep in mind that you've denied other children from having this great teacher. So I'm more concerned with the deeper issues here. What are we left with? The process of starting over? But would we be looking for teachers that are robots to administration? Yes, sir, or no, ma'am? Slaves to test scores and curriculum? What message are we sending new professionals? Better do what you're told, or you'll be cast aside before you make tenure. Working conditions are being set forth in other schools. Even tenured teachers might be concerned about voicing their own opinion on any matter. If they don't comply, that this, this will affect their teaching evaluation. Is that the case that's going on here? We don't know, and I leave that to you to further pursue. So how will we get, ever get excellent teachers to work in this district? What exactly is the priority of this administration? Clearly, it's not the students. If it were, none of us would be here tonight. We wouldn't have to be. So I'm asking the school committee to please, via the checks and balances of our children's education, that your duty as an elected official, your duty as to ask meaningful questions to the administration, your duty to listen to parents and listen to teachers in our district. Finally, Dr. Phil, I respect all the hard work that you've put forth in our district. You've made a difference in our education system. However, I ask that you never lose sight of your single most important priority, our children. And ultimately, every decision you should, you should, sorry, ultimately, every decision that you make should start and end with this question. What is best for our students and our children? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to offer comment?
Madam Chair, before, another comment. May I just make a brief statement so people understand? Thank the speaker for the comments. Just so everyone is aware, the school committee on personnel matters, if anyone else is planning to speak about any personnel matter, whether it's similar to what the gentleman just spoke about or any other, when the school committee has not notified any person that they're going to be discussed, the school committee can't discuss, and generally does not discuss any personnel matters. So if you meet stony silence, so to speak, it's not because there's any conspiracy theory, it's simply because they're not permitted to do so. Also, with respect to personnel matters generally, the school committee can only act upon a recommendation by the administration. So the central administration, with respect to any personnel matter, whether it is the hiring, or firing, or non-renewal, or whatever the circumstances for a teacher, for a member of the non-teaching staff, they take actions based on recommendations by the central administration, and only recommendations that are made to the school committee. So if it isn't before then, they can't do anything. Just want to make that clear, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
I appreciate that, thank you.
My name is Melissa Levineer, also here to speak on behalf of Mrs. Salon. I do appreciate your comments. I'm not expecting a resolution or even comments back, I just wish to be heard. I'm here this evening to voice my concern with the decision to rescind the contract of my daughter's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Nicole Salon. I have three daughters in community school system, all currently, in Cumberland School System, all currently at community school. Two of my children have been lucky enough to have Mrs. Salon as a kindergarten teacher. Both parents and children have difficulty making the adjustment between preschool and elementary school. This is a time of many changes that can be stressful for kids to navigate. Mrs. Salon not only made my children feel safe and welcome, but they couldn't wait to get to school every day to see her. My children entered kindergarten with different skill sets. The elder of the two was reading at a high level, but she struggled with math and writing numbers. My youngest was not reading. She was reluctant and intimidated. Mrs. Salon not only helped them focus and improve their skills, but she was able to recognize and encourage their strengths. As my youngest celebrates her last day of kindergarten tomorrow, she leaves Mrs. Salon's classroom as not only a kindergarten graduate, but an happy reader. She is excited about buying chapter books and bookmarks this weekend so she can complete her summer reading like her big sisters. We owe this milestone to the passion and commitment Mrs. Salon brings to her students each day. Mrs. Salon is a true partner. I feel that she truly acts in the best interest of my children. She has always provided me with open and honest feedback that has helped my children become better students. She infuses her teaching with fun and inventive lessons that help them to understand concepts easily. I'm sure I'm not the only parent here who's heard the story of Mrs. Salon dressing as the king of Bing, or has seen the dance to Tootie Top that helps them follow directions. The Cumberland School System is filled with passionate and talented teachers. Mrs. Salon has chosen both of these things and so much more. It would be to the detriment of our town that we let such an outstanding teacher like Mrs. Salon walk away. The very best teachers strive to make a difference in the lives of their students. Mrs. Salon hits this mark with each and every child in her classroom. My daughters have brought from home countless pictures and written notes to Mrs. Salon. And no matter what the content, they always have the same message at the end. I love you, Mrs. Salon. I stay here not just as a concerned citizen, but as a parent standing up for someone my children love. I ask that you please reconsider Mrs. Salon's contract so that more parents and children can have the wonderful experience my family has had these past two years. Thank you.
Would anyone else have to speak?
My name is Lynn Hawkins. I have four children in the Cumberland School District, three at community, and one at the Cumberland Preschool Center. I'm here today to support an amazing teacher, Miss Nicole Salon, a kindergarten teacher at community school. Tonight, you have to decide whether you recall for the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year. I thought a lot about what I was going to say today, and I'm obviously very nervous to speak. I started thinking about what makes a teacher valuable? What makes one stand out from the rest? I'm a teacher, I'm a teacher, and I've been a teacher for fourteen years, and I see teachers come and go all the time. What makes one truly special? What separates a good teacher from a really good teacher from excellent teacher? It's not the teacher with the highest test scores or the best rating, definitely not. It is not the teacher that is the most organized or the most disciplined. Although Miss Salon is all of these things, she is much more. It is her dedication to her students and her genuine deep concern that each one of her students reach their full potential. And that really makes Miss Salon stand out for the rest. Miss Salon takes the time to know each one of her students and make them feel special. My daughter had a hard time, excuse me, at community school in kindergarten, and it was her that really got her through that time. Miss Salon takes the time to know each one of her students and make them feel special. In turn, because of this, each one of her students want to do well and strive to do their best and achieve their best. Not all teachers can do this. I would like to say, stand up here and say that every teacher has a deep concern for their students, and that's why they're a teacher. But that is unfortunately not the case. Not all teachers actually feel that way, but she does. And the students perform not because they want to do well on a test, they do it for her, they want to do it for her. Members of the school committee, as members of the school committee, I would hope that you are here to protect the best interests of the students and make Cumberland School District the best that it can be. I would think that's why that you took your position. In recalling Miss Salon, you will be achieving this goal. To get rid of one of the best teachers would be a severe loss for Cumberland and the community school. You will not find a better teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Karen Miles, and I'd like to speak on Mrs. Salon's behalf. I'm a concerned parent of my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Salon. I'd like to read a letter from my daughter to Mrs. Salon that she wrote for her last day of school. Dear Mrs. Salon, I had a great, sorry, school year. It was awesome, made fun making crafts, learning the king of Bing, drawing on our whiteboards, the five-ten and two club. My favorite thing about you is you are very, 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 very nice, and you are a great teacher. Now I can read books, and I can count by twos. I know about planting and painting, and how to respectfully, responsibly, and be, how to be respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. I like listening, sitting at your desk and having lunch with you. Love, Georgia. I have also had the opportunity to be a volunteer in the classroom. I've been impressed with Mrs. Salon's ability to be compassionate, strict, and fun, and a highly effective teacher while embracing the Common Core system. Mrs. Salon has presented the program with enthusiasm, and when we as parents have questioned some of the parts of the Common Core, Mrs. Salon is quick to point out many positives in this system. I have noticed many teachers come to her for advice and guidance without, with different needs. She is always respectful and accommodating. My child has flourished with Mrs. Salon as a teacher and is looking forward to seeing her during the next school year. Please reconsider this unfounded decision to rescind Mrs. Salon's contract. She's a wonderful, highly effective teacher with a heart of gold. We as parents, voters, and taxpayers would feel confident that our voices are being heard if Mrs. Salon is welcomed back to community school.
And I also wanted to comment on, she's had a really hard time. Her heart is just broken. And I think we probably already lost her as a kindergarten teacher, and it is very concerning that this is how our administration runs. So we really would like you to welcome her back, and it will be her decision if she will accept. But we as parents want to know that our voices are being heard. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ms. Erin Barrier, and I'm also here to support the renewal of Mrs. Salon's contract. Renewing Mrs. Salon's contract would be a very positive move in the right direction as we are all building a school system of better, more qualified teachers. If it is not renewed, it should be deemed a failure and will surely be in the eyes of the parents and our children. My hope in standing here is that you are focused on the right things when evaluating her ability to teach our children. I respectfully ask that you fully consider all elements of her performance and place the most significance on her ability to teach and vote to renew her contract with community. I have one fourth-grade student and two kindergarten students this year. Within our school system, I have experienced teachers who are very poor in their profession, and I've experienced some that are very positive. Because of this mixed bag of sorts, I was anxious when I received the letter last August for who my kids would get for teachers. Would I get the rumored teachers that are all, that are all the problem ones? Or would I get the good ones? My fears were all relieved this year. I was very pleased to hear that all three were with teachers that were considered to be strong. Mrs. Friedland in grade four, and Ms. Majah, Mrs. Salon for kindergarten. I commented to a few people that I won the teacher lottery this year. And unfortunately, other parents were jealous of that, and they agreed with me because it's not the case for everybody. My children have all had a great year. My daughter has had the best year to date at community. My sons are coming out of kindergarten, reading chapter books, and jumping into my daughter's fourth-grade level math, asking questions and trying to learn more. Specifically, my son Jack has been with Mrs. Salon. I will ask that you appreciate the type of child that Jack is. He is very bright. He's so bright that his pre-K teacher told me to keep an eye on him because he was ahead of his peers coming into kindergarten and could get bored and disengaged. Jack doesn't want to know things, he wants to know why. And he doesn't just ask why to be a pest. He needs to know why logically so that he can get it, not just because you say it to him. He is analytical and logical, and I love that about him. Mrs. Salon loves that about Jack as well. She gets into the analysis and the logic for Jack and really engages with him. He has come home and explained movement of the body to me based on bone structure, and explained to me in detail the vertebrae in our backs. He's talked about butterflies and their complete metamorphosis, going through the four life stages with details. This morning, when I told him on his way to the school bus stop that he was moving like a snail, he actually stopped to tell me that water snails walk a little bit faster than land snails, and he thinks he's more like a water snail. I asked him how he knew about this, and he said that Mrs. Salon helped him compare the two so he could tell me. Mrs. Salon is smart, energetic, organized, and compassionate. Mrs. Salon is smart, energetic, organized and compassionate. She's been a pleasure to spend time with and consistently has shown that she has the best interest of all of her students. She embodies the talent that we should all hope for in a teacher and she should be someone that is used as a benchmark to search for and bring new talent into this school system. Her dedicated dedication to the academic achievement, in addition to her dedication to the emotional and social development of our children is exemplary and has exceeded all of my expectations. Last month, I was thinking about next year and thinking that I just hope the kids get good teachers again this coming year. My oldest daughter really needs a strong teacher or she may struggle going into the higher grades. The boys are so energized about school, they have no idea, they don't even fathom that school can't be great. But we all know that there are teachers that lose them along the way. If me getting up here tonight and rallying for the support for Mrs. Salon as a community school teacher helps with her contract renewal, I know it was time well spent. That renewal will give 20 parents this coming August the peace of mind that their child will have a great teacher and then another 20 the following year and more and more year after that. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Thank you. I'll just add, I know it's difficult and unfortunately, there's not much we can say or respond to. We do take very seriously tenured teachers and non-tenured teachers and have worked pretty faithfully with the administration to, um, to keep the best teachers and to call out the teachers that struggle in our district. And so when there are situations like this, that there seems to be a, a difference of opinion, it does make it more challenging for everyone. And I do know that the administration has, um, taken a, a strong look at this. They, they're very serious about what they do and we do know that there were 78 non-tenured teachers, um, in the district this year and five of them will not be asked back. So it is, it is a serious matter and we know that in prior years, um, we didn't have that level of scrutiny in the district, um, and we're working through trying to remedy some of that right now. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, 2014 school accountability report. Dr. Thornton?
Mr. Mitchell's up. Good evening once again, everyone. We thought we'd use this time to provide a general overview of the school accountability classifications for each of our schools. And we thought that, you know, if need be, we could certainly dig a little deeper in the achievement subcommittee if you so choose. But, um, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and give a general overview of the school classification process and, um, Mr. Temeraro, um, has a brief, um, PowerPoint presentation that he will provide regarding the high school and their classification, which I think you'll find quite interesting. Every year in May, the Rhode Island Department of Ed classifies each of the schools in the state based on a fairly sophisticated statistical formula. And it was, actually, I think this is year four, um, of this, um, most recent tool that they use. And schools are classified into six categories: commended, leading, typical, warning, focus and priority. And, um, to share how our schools, um, have been categorized, um, with the exception of the high school, all of the schools are either typical or leading. North Cumberland Middle School and McCourt Middle School are typical. BF Norton, Cumberland Hill, Garvin and Ashton have been classified as typical and community is a leading school. The high school has been classified, um, as a warning school, which is interesting. These classifications are based on the most recent kneecap scores. So we, actually, I, I shared a presentation with you, um, I believe in February, um, on our scores. Uh, and I think one of the things that I recall that we were celebrating was the fact that, um, in the last five years, Cumberland was identified as, I believe, one of nine or 10 districts that have shown statistically significant growth in math and ELA. So obviously that was something that we should feel really good about. So these, the, the classification for each of the schools is based on the, um, previous testing year. So, um, as you all know, the kneecap is given in October. The actual, um, assessment is of the previous year's learning. So the classification is actually based on the 2012, 2013 school year. And I also, um, would like to add that this is based solely on the kneecap scores, which are ending. Um, October was the last time that grades K through eight will be taking the kneecap. Juniors will be taking the kneecap again in the fall because that is still a part of the graduation requirement. But all of the other grades will be taking the part, um, in the spring of 2015. Now, I think, I think, um, this process will be better understood when we hear from Mr. Temeraro, but, um, I would just like to add my personal, um, opinion about this particular classification. As I mentioned, the high school has been designated as a warning school, which is really interesting because all of the data that they use to determine, um, you know, where the school falls in that, um, classification continuum, they improved in every single category with the exception of one, and that was economically disadvantaged students in math, in math only. So the high school has 15 targets that they're expected to hit. They hit 14 of 15 targets and they improved significantly in all of the other targets. So the important thing, I think, for, for me to share with you in my role as assistant superintendent is that even though our students performed better, um, on the most recent kneecap, um, we still, and, and, and it's based on, uh, a point system, we improved our performance by, I believe, 20 points or so. And we are actually in the leading category. So even though we, our point, our total number of points puts us in the leading category because we didn't hit the target in that, um, one particular category, we are a warning school.
Can I take a question? Does it make it more challenging for high schools? Do you see a lot of more variation and fluctuation because they only have one year's worth of test data versus a middle school which would have three years versus an elementary school that may have four, four years?
Well, I think it's a tremendous disadvantage because it's, it's not only, at the high school level, by the way, it's not only the prior year's learning, it's actually, when you consider that, the kneecap assessment is given in, um, the fall, in October. So that means that for 11th grade students, they're actually being assessed on their eighth grade learning, their ninth grade learning and their 10th grade learning. So it does make it really difficult to, um, pinpoint where students are falling behind. But one thing I think that is, um, obvious, um, based on my observation and work that's being done at the high school is they have developed, um, a data system that, um, really focuses on student performance in every category, everything from their, um, their, their grades and individual coursework, their star assessments, um, their attendance, their behavior. So they have this sophisticated data system that they're using to identify and provide intervention for those students who need it. So I think it's, I think it would be helpful that if, um, if Mr. Temeraro can show you his brief PowerPoint right now, there's a lot of really good information there and I think it'll give you some real insight into how this process works. I, I personally, having been a high school principal, think that the performance of the high school, even though they've been labeled as a warning school because of the tremendous growth that they, and you'll see in a second how much growth they exhibited this year, I think that it's something to celebrate.
Thank you. Uh, thank you to everybody who attended graduation. If you haven't seen the site that highlights under our graduates, uh, please try and take a look at it. I think more important than any, label the opportunity and the successes and the experiences that the students talk about on that, uh, site certainly, um, tells us that, uh, there's not, uh, much on this label that really sticks here to this high school. Just go to the next slide. Uh, you have this in front of you, you may have to share, I don't know if I made enough copies, but those are the measures that, uh, schools are measured by, high schools specifically are measured by, and it gives you the definition, uh, and there are points associated with each of those measures. As you can see, we maintained in one area because we had a high score already. We increased in all the other areas and then in our achievement gap area, we increased by 1.5 points. But, uh, Mike. The next slide that you see in orange is our scores from last year where we were classified as a typical school. Uh, the, the green and red boxes show you the, uh, increase in 2014. So in proficiency, we went up four points, we stayed level in progress, gap closure went down by that 1.5 that I talked about. Then we increased in all the other areas. And so that brought our composite score into the leading school range and gave us a total point score of 74.2. However, we did miss, uh, one annual measurable objective. If you go to the next slide, warning schools are defined by any one of the following criteria. And so the one that, uh, gave us that label is this failure, failure to attain any AMO for three consecutive years. And the AMO, uh, as Mr. Mitchell said, were our economically disadvantaged in math. Go to the next slide. I think this picture shows a lot. Uh, we were very aggressive about, uh, the fact that we did not meet 18 of those annual measurable objectives last year. And those red arrows point to all of the ones that we missed last year. If you go to the next slide, that's all we have left this year. Uh, last year we were typical, this year we're labeled as warning. So we go from that, those 18, uh, issues to this one. If you go to the next one, you can see again that there was improvement in all of those other areas. See graduation rate up by 4.2 percent. You see in reading, we were up 3.1 to about 90 percent proficient. Mathematics is up 6.7 points from, uh, over the past two years, 17 points. And then our participation rates, as you can see with some of the changes we made, including going to people's homes and getting them to school, take the kneecap, uh, you can see that those rates are at 100 percent this year with some of the protocol changes that we made. Put a next one up. This is some comparisons of some similar schools that have a similar sized population. They have, uh, the same, uh, percentage or so of IEP students and also students that have a low socioeconomic status. And you can pull a lot from this if you look at the difference between Cumberland and North Kingston. Uh, Kingston is a leading school. They are, uh, by three tenths of a point higher than us. They hit nine of their 13 targets, we hit 14 out of 15. And, and we're considered a warning school because of that one criteria that says that we missed that for three years. If you look at Cranston West, again, 12 out of 15 that they hit there, composite score is lower than us, the economically disadvantaged subgroup in math didn't meet the target at Cranston West and they only met 12 out of 15 indicators. And I think as Mr. Sharkhart said, if you look at the per pupil expenditure, and this was a consumer report, so you'd probably get a best buy label for, uh, the work that's going on at the high school. For the next one.
Not to interrupt, but I think we were a best bang for walking around and not forgetting that.
This is the group, the mathematics for economically disadvantaged, uh, subgroup. And this gives you an idea of the past three years and then what our annual measurable objective is for next year. As you can see, uh, it's a bit of a roller coaster in terms of the, uh, performance of the cohort. Uh, the percent proficient in 2012 was 12.5 percent. Last year it was 36.8 percent and then, uh, this, this most recent fall was 27.5 percent. The good thing about that is that we certainly have, um, had seen significant improvement in our low SES math proficiency since 2012. And in fact, if you look at 2013, we surpassed the annual measurable objective by a few points. The problem with that 2013 year is that the AMO is measured by percent proficient but also by the participation rate. And so it's a dual thing that they measure and our participation rate was at 91 percent. Based on the performance of last year's subgroup, uh, we really pushed to get to 100 percent because we thought that the performance would be good enough to, uh, get us where we needed to get and, and that was the only group that, that didn't get there. But we're certainly closing the gap. The gap in 2012 was 7.8 percent when you account for the, uh, when you add in the margin of error and 2014 it was only 3.4 percent. So it's not just percent proficient, it was also the participation rate last year, but we made changes to ensure that that never happens again. If you look at 2015, so next fall, uh, I'm sorry, go back, that last row that you see there, so there's 85 students, uh, that are in this subgroup, uh, 24 have IEPs, seven are English language learners, 42 percent of them are proficient in eighth grade. None of them met the PSA T score in 10th grade, uh, the alternative test score, cut score. So they're all certainly, um, you know, it's an indicator of where their math, uh, performance is at this time. So I, I point that out to say that this label didn't all of a sudden create this light bulb and say, hey, oh my God, there's a spotlight on this group. We were very well aware of who these kids are, we have a very advanced data system. We have already put in tons of interventions specific to the subgroup and we're continuing to create more. So we, we were all over the numbers, we know who they are and we're, we're, we're trying to get them there. So we hope that we're within the margin, with the margin of error next year that we, that we get there. And maybe the cohort will, will perform very well also. This is, uh, just a snapshot from that data system that I'm talking about. Two months before these results even came out, uh, we had identified in this subgroup attendance as a major issue. That is a, I, I just copied and pasted, uh, 18, uh, rows, student names aren't there, but if you look at the days absent to date, the days tardy to date and the percentage absent to date, those are, uh, just a sampling of 18 students from that group of, I said, 85. We know that one of our issues is attendance with this group. They're coming from a disadvantaged group. Uh, we know that if they're in school, they do better and we have an attendance issue. And so we're working at incentive programs, consequence programs, uh, different things in order, and family communication to get these students in school. And it's not because of suspensions or condom, that's actually relatively low. It's, it's students not coming to school. And if you look at the kids who scored one, they had on average of 19 days absent. And in a rotated schedule, you're missing a lot of class time there. They're, they're scored two or three, about 10 days absent and students that scored four in that group only had three and a half days absent. So certainly has an impact and that's one thing on the family side of things that we certainly need to work on as we have the mutual responsibility of providing all the supports that we're providing on our side. Um, and then if you go to the next one, we're constantly, um, you know, we're so open to this kind of accountability and transparency. Uh, we work tirelessly, uh, as an administrative team and as a faculty to continually improve. These are some of the things that we dedicate to the subgroup but also the school as a whole. There's a summer math academy that is for free that actually offers students math credit. It's a real world math environment that students can attend at around college, transportation, everything included. Um, we provide a summer real world math support session here at the high school that is for free because we were able to move so many students on the ASVAB this year that were, um, kneecap retakers, we were able to take the economically disadvantaged group and put them into this summer session if they choose to come, of course. So we need to... So we need to, I mean, hopefully be there. We use Accelerate Math, we're offering Saturday test prep sessions for this group, this group and everyone. We have put all these students into a numeracy class with their current math achievement on our star assessment shows that they need it. We're working at new attendance incentives, and we're also looking at ideas like, we need to get out to the community, instead of having to come to school for these kind of supports, we need to go to the Louisiana Club, we need to go to wherever, a place where there's some classrooms and some halls, and provide tutoring in the communities themselves so the students don't have to go, come all the way back to school or go as far. That's something that we gotta work out funding and things like that for, but those are the type of things that we need to be doing and getting out there. And I just end with, and I'll take any questions you have. Within the whole context of Cumberland High School and the trend that Mr. Mitchell was talking about, we had a tremendous NEAS accreditation report. I talked about a lot of those increases. The plus 30 in writing doesn't really matter for this, because this is about math and reading. But we certainly are making changes that you see there, recognized by a consortium of schools, and we've seen tremendous improvements in culture. And then finally, the amount of AP enrollments and test takers is on the next slide. You see the dramatic increase in the amount of students taking rigorous courses and doing pretty well. We have over, this year, we had 378 tests taken, which is the most, a very long time, and 226 students that are involved. And the final slide is the new symbol, well, it's the old symbol, I recall, but one that we're trying to promote, and the Latin phrase there means work, hard work conquers all. And y'all have a lapel pin that I provided for you up on the table, it's a, it's that symbol, and it's a gift from the high school, and our commitment, our promise to continue to work very hard to improve in every single area.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a comment, just to further complicate the ranking conversation, I was just putting off the committee. The size of the high school especially really can play a factor into this conversation. We certainly, and Cumberland will get better, but Cumberland has 15 targets. Some schools have five targets, some other schools have 21 targets. It's kind of like, if you're in a hurdle race, some schools have five hurdles to clear in the race, and have 21, and have 50 like Cumberland. So, it's a very interesting ranking system, how they do this, but the size of the high school makes a huge difference in the conversation. If you look at the rankings, you see some large high schools like Westerly, Charro are doing a good job, but many of the schools of our thousands of students are down low in the rankings. There's a reason for that, it's harder to get all the hurdles. The other piece I want to mention is, this ranking system will have to be reexamined and do it apart. It's a new test, new baseline, how do you start the ranking, how do you figure this out? So it's gonna be a whole new conversation, how they rank in the future.
Dr. Thorne, I just add too, I think a lot of times people associate the warning label with that of like an accreditation warning, and it's very, very different. That label from accreditation agencies after a tremendous study of the whole visiting team, and it's the very bottom of the barrel rating that you can get. This is a, we're really a leading school with a cautionary, and trust me, we have tons of area improvement. I could list four slides of areas of improvement, because we're trying to improve in tons of areas. But this is a warning, you've had that in the past three years, and make sure you can add it and change it.
Yeah, just on the topic itself, mathematics, economically disadvantaged, I mean, that's an important topic, so, and it's, you know, there's these benchmarks that are gonna determine, you know, your future, and whether or not you meet them even earlier, it's gonna have a lot to do with those students in the job market and their ability to, you know, earn a decent living. So, I think, I don't think it's a bad thing to be on the warning, I think a lot of times you should act as if you are, all the time. I think there's a motivation factor there, so that's not bad, and I do commend all the good work at the high school, which is evident in the presentation. What is, how's this subgroup doing at the middle school level? Because these are gonna become high school students, so do you know if we're...
Right now, all I know right now, we haven't looked at the group coming in, though. With the creation of the freshman teams next year, we have, they set aside just to analyze the data of the students that are coming over into these teams, so they know them very well. But right now, we've looked significantly at the 10th grade, because they'll be taking the kneecap again next year, and so that's the group that we're really focusing on to move that subgroup.
If I could just add to that, I think that's a great question, because this is not just a high school issue, it is a systemic issue. And I can tell you, you know, we meet, we meeting the principals, we have monthly meetings, we have monthly meetings with the middle school principals, monthly meetings with the elementary principals. And I can tell you that there is a real focus on using data to drive instruction, and there's a lot of work being done with RTI, which is response to intervention, and a lot of work being done to meet the specific needs of students. So, I think that's a great question, and I think it's important to know that there's a lot of hard work taking place at each of the middle schools right now to respond to the needs of all students, but, you know, since we're talking about economically disadvantaged students, they are driven by data.
Thank you. And it's just that, I just don't think they realize, you know, the families, you know, it is, it is something that they can't afford not to be proficient in. So that kind of goes to the next thing, and that's always a dicey subject. But in a recently passed budget, town budget, there is a line item there, and I forget exactly what it says, but there was this $100,000 line item that passed through the council there for, on the town side, we start with achievement. And at any time, a budget can be amended, and certain factors can, you know, be present to affect the tax rate either up or down, and that's done in April and May. So, and that's kind of a loosely defined item right now in the budget. Matter of fact, one would say it hasn't been defined, never mind loosely, but there's funding there. Here's a, you know, I still keep going back, there was the CHS 2010, and it's 2014, and it's not, although you're doing a great job, and we're definitely a lot closer than we were, it's not what I think people, you know, felt it could be and what it should be. So, it's time somebody put some of the monkey on some of the decision makers' backs. There's a line item there, that if you came up with a program, you spoke to, you know, being outside Louisiana or anywhere else, there's an opportunity there, that, a strong presentation that would take this high school off the warning status and make it a leading amendment, to put that monkey on the back of the people who have to fund it. So, it's already there, it passed muster, it is in the budget, it is open for anyone to, you know, make a play, if, you know, respect, not that my best word's there, but and a no tax increase. I would think that in the future, I'd ask that you not lose sight of that as a possibility and offer that as an opportunity for someone to vote down. You know, in action, you know, if you don't make a play for it, then no one has to make a stance. And so I would suggest that that be a possibility in the future. Also want to say that on, for me, and I'm not a big Facebook user, but there was a post that came out, and I just thought it was kind of a worship moment, there was a post that came out that sought to make, say, hey, the fact that it was warning, it was really nice to see unsolicited feedback or responses to that, that didn't go along with it. And I can tell you that a few years ago, that would never have happened, and, or if it happened, it would have been an orchestrated intent to make it happen. And I know it wasn't, and so I think everybody should feel really good about that, because it was really good. So, thanks. Certainly concerned about, you know, those that just might read the headline, because there's a lot of detail here, I think that it shows otherwise, and Mr. Mitchell talks about developing systems, not only K through 12, but at the high school, developing capacity around systems is an involved process, takes a little bit more time, some does take resource time, but will have an impact, instead of just saying, hey, we're gonna do this quick activity and see if we can spend some money on it and get it done. So, it does take a little bit more time, but I think the whole district really is doing a great job, K through 12, at filling gaps, and we'll just continue to see improvements.
Anyone else? Mr. Duffy?
Just like to bring us back to the attendance portion. On the slide that shows what there are an average of 19 days or more, they score one, nine and a half, two or three, or three and a half, or four. This chart that I'm looking at here, is this just for the economically disadvantaged, or is this a catch-up?
Just the economic.
How do those figures, as far as percentage of days out, apply to non-economically disadvantaged? Maybe you haven't done that, pulled that data up yet.
I have it in front of me, but I could get that to you.
I'm just curious to see if it correlates, or if it's, if it's a sliding scale, it's a little different on that side.
We generally, I think it's well known that attendance and conduct issues, if you have a lot of them, that you're gonna do worse in school. And we definitely validated that with our own data. I mean, we can tell kids that if you miss this many days of school, you're probably gonna get this many F's. And we're at that point, and we're making profiles of students to say, hey, if this is you, and maybe you're already coming from one of these groups, and you do these things, you're gonna make it. If you do these things, you're in danger. And so we really do have that profile validated by our own student information already.
Just to follow up on that, I see a lot of this as attendance, standard nutrition, and asleep, all kind of rolled into one issue. But maybe possibly, it wouldn't be net to the year after that, once the Chromebook start working its way up, there might be more of an opportunity for those students, even if they're out 19 days, they're still gonna have access to that material at home, to be able to see what their other students that they're working with in class are working on, and still have that feedback even with teachers, even if they're physically out at home, they're gonna have still a connection potentially to the classroom in, what, 14 months, not this year, but just something else to look at going forward. If we know that there's an issue here, as the kids move up, it might be a chance to see how that technology, when they head at home, even if they're out, if that can also change or improve this, even if they're out sick. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, Mr. Tino, what are we doing this summer with these kids? Are we getting them here?
We actually take care of transportation and everything, so we contact the families, they've already been contacted with a letter highlighting the program. We follow up with phone calls, see who would need transportation. Last year, we had two buses, one that went to each side of the city and picked the kids up, and had a specific location and drove them here and dropped them off there. At times, they even take them all, depending on how many kids are on the bus. So they'll be here for our Accelerate Math, our Renaissance learning program that identifies the skill efficiencies that they have, the work that they should be working on, and that teachers know based on the composite data from this group, the, some of the big picture items that they need to work on sometimes in a whole group with the students. So they'll have 15 hours or so of that during the summer.
As the group that we identified, the 85 students, what is the, what is the projected participation rate this summer coming in? We getting a lot of pushback from parents, or?
No, we did 10th grade last year, so I can just go based on the 11th grade last year. We invited 102 11th graders, and we had 57 that were there. Just pretty good.
Anyone else? I just want to thank you for the comprehensive nature of this. I would say that this is, we set a high bar, and I know we've been working through this through the years. We've certainly had an interest and had put poor Mr. Scott under quite the spotlight for quite a while, and I'm sure he's happy to see some of the positive results in this, but the analysis is great, and I think we can put it on the website so that the community can have it available, because I do think it provides a level of confidence in that you're being very proactive with the students and you're ensuring that there are programs in place and you're encouraging them. And I love the brutal facts part that you're providing to them, this is one path you can take, and we're here to support you, but you can also take another path, and it's gonna be a whole lot more challenging for those students. And I'll just add, having listened to quite a number of school commencement speeches since, you know, the past six or eight years, it's interesting to hear the evolution of their anecdotal information. There were years when we had the big wrecking ball go through the school, and that was part of the commencement speech, we heard about just how angry kids were, but that's not what we heard this time. And I think that that, you know, not to belabor the power of one, but we certainly, I think it gave kids a sense of that the community cares about them, and that the school has a deep interest in their success. And I think the speeches and all the remarks and the behavior of the students really is reflective of the transformation that we're seeing in the district, so thank you and your staff for that service.
That student in 123.
Yeah, no, 123, he will remain nameless. Mr. Murray?
Would you like to come to the microphone? Not really, but I will.
Thank you very much for appeasing me.
Mr. Murray's comments on the $100,000. I just want to clarify it, we did pass that. The mayor did explain that he wants to use that in a, for the underachieving areas, and I would suggest very strongly that, Alan, that you contact the mayor, I know he's setting up a committee of some parents, he's talked to Dr. Patterson, I believe, and I believe that's the direction he's going to formulate how to use these funds. So there is a, in his mind and in the council mind, there is a direction we're going with that $100,000, it's just not a figure sitting there. So if anybody within the school system has reasons to let him know, I'm not talking to the mayor, but to let him know what they need, I think that's the best thing to do. But this committee will be set up, and I'm sure they'll be announced.
Terrific. Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Murray?
Yes, my comment is there, I think that there, I agree, there have been some discussions about the initial dollar sign, or dollar mark, but as I said, my point there is that that's a line that can change, and they could vote that down, you could vote to increase that line up. I think that there has, you know, been a lot of talk about, you know, various aspects of collaboration and entities in town, and meetings, and this and that, and here's one that I think people should be able to get their heads around. Yeah, I know it's one of subgroups, it's an important subgroup, not that there's one that isn't an important subgroup, this is a gateway to the future. I mean, obviously, I think the best way to get the number down is come into, come into the high school with less already in that subgroup, but this is a place where it fits, you know, and it fits in a lot of areas over time with the CHS 2010, and it's the one group that right now is on warning status. And though I know it's about test scores and, you know, it's always hard to get some sort of definition of what, you know, what well is, but here's one we could pick, you know, here's one that, okay, great numbers coming out of the high school in this one area, and it's indisputable, it's right there, there's your one area. Well, can people work on one area and try to get it solved? Is there a mechanism in the budget right now? It is cyclical at this point, other than the dollar mark. It can be increased, that's all I'm saying. Takes four people to do so. You have to ask them. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the ESCO ENE energy update. Dr. Thornton, is that from Mr.?
I think this might give it our conversation, this consultant, who would table that, is that correct?
I would say, I would answer that in general terms, yes. There was a resolution out, it was on the docket, that we did table, which is...
There was a resolution out, it was on the docket, that we did table, which is related to this subject, yes.
So you're looking for a motion to table? Is that correct? Or you moved to table?
I will move to table this discussion.
So, motion by...
I thought I was going to explain it to him, so since you're not going to discuss that, tell him what happened.
Okay, we moved to table that. Do I have to thank Mr. Fiorello? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item, Chromebook deployment at the middle schools and teacher training. Dr. Thornton?
Yes, I have both middle school principals. Ms. Cofflin, she'll come out with a brief update for you on the Chromebooks. Dr. Matheson?
Good evening. We've been in conversations with, between myself and Dr. Matheson, with Mike Chandler in planning professional development for next week. We have two days planned through Google, and which two teachers will take part in day-long workshops. They will, there is, there are four planned work sessions that all teachers will rotate through over the course of those two days. Additionally, we have planned for our Chromebook distribution dates, they're at the end of August, excuse me, August nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, seventh, sixth, and eighth grade respectively. We have elicited, we will be doing the distribution at each of our schools on the same night. Tuesday night will be an evening, Thursday night will be an evening, Wednesday will be an afternoon to coincide with sixth grade orientation. We have elicited the help of our staff, and they have been willing to volunteer their time to assist us with the distribution, and the giving of information to the students and the parents, and then the putting students into small groups in order to get them started and get them comfortable enough to start playing with the Chromebooks a little bit before they come to us in September. So these plans are in place, and the staff is very excited, and the students have been doing a lot of talking about it, especially our fifth grade presentations in the elementary schools. The students are very, very excited.
Excellent. Questions? Good luck, it sounds like it'll be a fun summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve Resolution SCPR 6 2014-08, electronic message sign at Cumberland High School. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution was in front of fiscal management this evening. It is a resolution authorizing upon the school committee to award the purchase of an electrical sign for the high school from DIA sign. I need, we want to amend to spell that S-I-G-N-S Incorporated of Central Falls, in the amount not due to see twenty-five thousand seven hundred. This is a similar resolution that was tabled back some time ago. It reflects a change order, increase of three thousand four hundred dollars to, to the dollar amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred. It did receive unanimous consent inside fiscal management until we first have a full passage this evening, and I'll move passage of SCPR 6 2014-08.
Thank you, Mr. Murray moves passage of SCPR 6 2014-08, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Do we know when this will be installed, Mr. Murray?
Mr. Trugnano and Dr. Thornton, we have that aspect.
I guess you said, I actually went to the vendor some time back, the message units should be in any day now. I'm expecting the sign up and running by a gentleman.
Excellent. And we were able, did we have to get a waiver because it was electronic?
No, we had to actually have the sign redesigned with a third pole for the engineer. This sign would now withstand winds for a hundred and twenty miles an hour for the specifications, so it's a three-pole sign, passed the ordinance in town, and we're good to go.
Hurricane ready. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Excellent. And next item, discussion and/or vote to approve Resolution SCR 2014-09, energy savings contract. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to, I guess for, this evening, this may not come back, but I'll move to table 2014-09.
So Mr. Murray moves to table the energy service contract SCR 2014-09, do I have a second? Second by Mr. De Monica. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to rescind teacher non-renewals for the 2014-2015 school year. Mr. Dr. Thornton? So we have, Mrs. Fogel, are there items before the committee with regard to non-renewals that you're looking for a vote this evening?
I'm sorry, yes, in the executive session, we presented twenty-two names.
Twenty-two.
And so I think the superintendent is recommending that you rescind the non-renewals that were issued on February eleventh of 2014 for those twenty-two individuals.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to accept Fogel's recommendation, rescind teacher non-renewals as laid out in the recommendation.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and by Mr. Fiorello, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve employment contract for the business manager. Mr. Murray, is that within fiscal this evening?
Yes, it was, Madam Chair. This contract, this particular individual extends the current contract for two years. The salary is compliant with the GCP policy for the, for all years beyond the second and third year, count the extension, which are TBD. They are budgeted, they received a unanimous vote in fiscal management to support the two-year extension. And I move the passage.
Mr. Murray moves passage of employment contract for the business manager, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello and Mr. De Monica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Chair voting yes. Next item, discussion and/or vote to delete the following policy. Mrs. Teal, we're deleting one, we're renumbered?
Yes, we are. All right. On a two-to-o vote, Dr. Colwell, Mr. Murray was absent, anything? We voted to approve the deletion of policy I-2, formerly IGA-HG, is the Students of Use Policy. That policy, or what's covered in that policy, is really covered under federal and state requirements, and Dr. Colwell stated that it was really not necessary to have it laid out as a separate policy, and certainly not that policy, which is grossly out of date. So it was moved to strike this policy from the policy, and I want to deserve a vote. I would like to make a motion that I-2, Students of Use Policy, can be deleted from the policy.
So Mrs. Teal moves to delete policy I-2, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, do you want to take item I?
Yes, of course. So I can take them together or individually?
Let's take them individually.
Okay. So I-12 is the proficiency-based grading policy for grades K through eight, as discussed earlier. This policy just really has been separated into two policies. There were no major changes made to this, other than it's separated out, so this, I would be looking for, I'm making a motion to accept the policy as amended, and it was approved in subcommittee two to zero to accept the policy.
Mrs. Teal moves passage of I-12, proficiency-based grading policy K-8, and Mr. Salvatore seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Teal.
Thank you. So I-13 is our proficiency-based grading policy for the high school. Again, on a two-to-zero vote, this policy was approved in subcommittee, and I would like to make a motion that I-13 proficiency-based grading policy for the high school be approved as amended.
Mrs. Teal moves passage of I-13 proficiency-based grading policy for the high school as amended? Is that what you said, Mrs. Teal?
Yes, because that policy was divided into two.
Oh, okay, I see. And second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Murray?
I just want to say that, I know it took us, you know, a long time to get to this point here, but, you know, has been the case, and a lot of times, that, you know, that the final product, I think, is better, and I think there's a lot of aspects to this that were, I almost want to say clever, but, I mean, it's just, I think it does what people were looking forward to do, and it maintains the conventional, more comforting numbers, which mean stuff to people, and so I think it was a nice compromise. I do want to, you know, it's not congrats, but I do want to extend that type of feeling towards anyone who was involved in the process. It was, because I was a little bumpy there for a while, and, you know, instead of maybe taking an extreme viewpoint, it was nice, it's nice to, to come to this, this place in a collaborative effort with, you know, members of the, of the public and the administration, so I'm glad it came to us, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Duffy?
Just very briefly, he always gets in just before me. I wanted to thank Alan, I know you put a lot of work into this, and it's gone through a lot of changes over the last twelve months, eighteen months, and to the administration, everyone in the school committee to get to where we are here with a lot of feedback from the community, and I think that it shows that your elected official of the school committee and the administration listened to the parents' concerns. It might not be everything for everybody, but I think we got as close as a compromise that everyone can live with, and I think it will work for the students as well, so I thank everyone.
Thank you. I just have to plug for Mrs. Teal, because there were many 7:30 meetings that she had with the administration trying to iron out questions and answers that, that came up, and a lot of it was alignment, and it was really getting us aligned so that we knew once the policy was in effect that we would be heading off on the right foot. And I would say historically, we never have had a chairperson take such a leadership role in policy to make certain that when it was finally ironed out, that it was solid. It was very good in that it really required collaboration at so many levels to, to know that administration was working with parents, to know that, you know, they were listening, listening to our anecdotal questions and concerns, as well as, we sent many things back to the drawing board, and they willingly came back with, with another revision, and sometimes we zigged and sometimes we zagged, and I'm sure they didn't like us sometimes. But hats off to you, you did an outstanding job, and the administration as well. I think we know when school starts in September, we are in a much better place for all students regarding continuity of instruction and grades, and, well, there may be a few bumps in the road, I think, you know, we've had a year to iron a lot of this out, so, everyone, thank you. Anyone else?
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Mrs. Teal, do you want to take the last two together?
I can take the last two together. On a two-to-zero vote, the C-1 flag display, flag salute, and treatment policy, and the G-10 verbal policy, I'm sorry, actually, I can't take them together, because the verbal policy should be back on the agenda for a separate meeting, because it is a goddamn policy. So, on a two-to-zero vote, I would like to move passage for C-1, flag display, flag salute, and treatment.
Mrs. Teal moves passage of C-1, flag display, flag salute, and treatment, and Mr. Salvatore seconds that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
And then I would ask that G-10 verbal policy for students who have reached the age of majority be placed on the next, our next meeting's agenda for a separate reading and vote.
So you moved to table G-10, and that's seconded by Mr. Salvatore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next item, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Fogel.
So I have the following resignations for you. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the resignation of William Skid, Assistant Principal at Community School, effective June thirtieth of 2014. Mr. Skid has been with us for nine years. The advising consent of the school committee on the resignation of Robert Crozier, Girls' Head Basketball Coach at Joseph Elmacourt Middle School, effective 5/30/2014. And lastly, the advising consent of the school committee on the resignation of Lyndon Deacon, Girls and Boys Assistant Tennis Coach at Cumberland High School, effective May thirtieth, 2014. Ms. Deacon is resigning after seventeen years as the tennis coach apparently.
Pleasure of the committee.
Madam Chair, would you like to motion to accept the recommendations?
Mr. De Monica moves to accept the recommendations presented by Mrs. Fogel, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. I just want to say that Mr. Skid's such a nice man, and was at Community School when my children were there, and offered a lot of wonderful continuity, he was a great listener, and he really, I think, helped to provide some stability to our program when we had quite a bit of fluctuation. That was in the olden days. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. I have one leave of absence for you.
Yes.
I request the advising consent of the school committee on the unpaid leave of absence of Tina Lemay, Grade Two Teacher at Garvin Elementary School, for the 2014-2015 school year. This leave will be effective August 21st of 2014.
Pleasure of the committee.
Motion, Madam Chair?
Motion by Mr. De Monica, second by Mrs. Teal. So because it's a leave of absence for one year, it's unpaid and no benefits?
Under the CTA contract, they are, if they do receive health insurance, they are entitled to continue with making co-payments. I am unsure as to, I do believe that she may take health insurance, but I will double-check that for you, but she would still be required to pay her co-share if she were.
Wonderful, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
Lastly, I have several appointments for you, I'm sorry. So I request the advising consent of the school committee on the appointments of Scott Carpenter, Dean of Students of, I'm sorry, Dean of Students and School Culture at Cumberland High School, effective August nineteenth, 2014. Christopher Skarka, Dean of Students and School Culture at Cumberland High School, effective August nineteenth, 2014. Lyndon Dewale, Interdisciplinary Coordinator for STEM at Cumberland High School, effective August fourteenth, 2014. Carolyn Dooley, Interdisciplinary Coordinator for Unified Arts at Cumberland High School, effective August fourteenth, 2014. Rhonda Dion, Director of Guidance at Cumberland High School, effective August fourteenth, 2014. Tandy LeMieux, Coordinator of Special Education at Cumberland High School, effective August fourteenth, 2014. And lastly, Amanda Latua, Interdisciplinary Coordinator for Humanities at Cumberland High School, effective August fourteenth, 2014. And just for a note, these positions are one-year positions, and these were the current deans and interdisciplinary coordinators for the 2013-2014 school year. The way the doc description reads, they are appointed each year, so we're reappointing them technically to these positions. And these positions, they are budgeted, they are paid, they are stepped, so they are contractual stepped with a $7,000 stipend for the work that they do in these areas. So I request the advising consent of those appointments.
Thank you. Pleasure of the committee.
Would you move, Madam Chair, for a quick question?
Motion by Mr. De Monica, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? No, I think that there's been a big transformation of the high school... No, I think that there's been a big transformation at the high school with the, and I'll see if I can say it right, the interdisciplinary coordinators, not intergalactic, try it every time. It's really given a different purpose and focus, and I've heard from many, many parents that they love the Dean of Students, and they love the, the environment within the school, and the fact that students feel safe and supported, and I think the Dean of Students' role isn't just discipline, but it's also about school culture, and I think they've made great efforts in that area, so it's, it's nice to have feedback, because I know a year ago at this time, we were trying to place those positions into our school system, and there was a lot of questions and concerns, and I think we validated that that was a really good decision on the part of the administration to make that shift and focus. So sometimes those new things are hard to bite onto, but I think this was a good one. Agreed. And just one last question, does this satisfy all of the interdisciplinary position?
Currently, we do have a posting for a new interdisciplinary coordinator for PE, APE and Health, we call it, aligned with the athletic director. That, that job was posted, so they'll be there, we're hoping eventually, I think maybe in July or August, I'll bring, hopefully bring someone else to you.
True.
But other than that, that's the only one that has not yet been appointed, because that's a brand-new position, based upon the budget.
So previously, PE was within Unified Arts, that direction, we're separating that?
Yes, we're separating it, only because the decision has been made to go with a full-time athletics director, based upon Mr. Geiselman's recommendation, and so it is not at all a statement of Ms. Dooley and her work, she's done a wonderful job with the PE department, but because of the school committee's decision to fund an athletics director, this was, the decision was made to move so that this person could be in charge of the PE, APE, Health, as well as our sports program.
Understood. Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Dr. Thornton, do we have an executive session this evening?
No, we don't.
Excellent. Oh, yes, we do have school committee comments below liaison reports.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say, the administration, especially Mr. Chandler, a while back, I sent them a link, I found another school website that converted the website into many different languages, and Mr. Chandler sent me an email, is now working on the school website, so it doesn't matter what the language may be, I think there's about 80 different languages our website is now translated into, and hopefully this can make it down to the local schools as well, so it'll be easier for our parents. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. And to the high school, the, the graduation was outstanding. Nicely done, decently done, and I think everyone had an enjoyable time. Anyone else? Mrs. Teal?
I just would like to add today, the improvement in the musical program was just outstanding, and it was really nice to see, and kudos to them, it was a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mutter?
Yeah, I would just like to commend those who spoke this evening on the matters of renewals or rescind, you know, until these, those are difficult matters, but as I said about the Facebook on regards to the high school, anytime, and it's difficult to come speak in public, and that individual should feel good to have people like yourself stand up for that, go to bed, so I just really commend you on that. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy? No? Speechless. Excellent. All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Teal, and Mr. Salvatore. All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are adjourned at 9:35.